Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Valdosta Board Education Work Session Call Meeting for June 27, 2023 at 7:00 PM. At this time, we'll have invocation by Mr. David Goyer.
Good morning, Father. Thank you for this opportunity we had to come together. Father, we ask that you would lead guidance to direct us all decisions that we would do, and we'll be sure to give you all the army authority. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take this time to welcome everyone that's here face to face, and also welcome those that are watching us Facebook Live. At this time, may I have approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, may we approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? At this time, may I have approval of the minutes from May 23, 2023?
Madam Chair, we accept the minutes of May 23, 2023.
Any discussion? All in favor? At this time, may I have approval of the minutes from May 30, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Do we have any to abstain? At this time, may I have approval of the minutes from June 1, 2023?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Do we have any to abstain? At this time, may I have approval of the minutes from June 6, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Do we have any to abstain? Please make note to review the minutes from June 13, 2023. At this time, I will turn it over to Judge Moore.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Please repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Craig Lockhart.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will truly perform.
That I will truly perform.
The duties of the local school superintendent.
The duties of the local school superintendent.
Of the Valdosta City School System.
Of the Valdosta City School System.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do further swear or affirm.
I do further swear or affirm.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted.
Of any unaccounted.
For public money.
For public money.
Due to this state.
Due to this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority.
Or authority.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will manage.
And that I will manage.
The finances.
The finances.
Of the local school system.
Of the local school system.
In compliance with all applicable laws.
In compliance with all applicable laws.
And regulations.
And regulations.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government.
Under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And any other state.
And any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am.
Which I am.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
Prohibited from holding.
Prohibited from holding.
That I am.
That I am.
Otherwise.
Otherwise.
Qualified.
Qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of Georgia.
Of Georgia.
And.
And.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Georgia.
Of the state of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, members of the board, Edron Superintendent, Dr. Alvin Hudson, I would like to again say thank you for your support for me, as well as my family, and your service to the Valdosta City School System. If you don't mind, I'd like to introduce my family. I get kind of choked up when I look at them. I have, of course, my lovely wife, Dr. Terry Lockhart. If you don't mind, they just saw you standing away. I have next to her, I have my middle child, we call her the me baby where I'm from, but my middle child, Leah Lockhart. She is a sophomore at Georgia Tech, majoring in industrial design. Thank you, Leah. We have my oldest child, Danielle Lockhart. Danielle is a second-year teacher in the Henry County School of Teachers, teaching drama. Now hopefully I can get her to come down south at some point. Thank you. And I have my son, Isaiah Lockhart. He was either rising junior, and I'm proud to say that he will be a wildcat this upcoming fall. In the Valdosta High School. I would just simply like to say to you all, thank you. Thank you all for being here, be it here or virtually or in spirit. We have a lot of work to do, but it's good work. It's great work. If life doesn't provide challenge, then it has no meaning. We have a meaning and a purpose that we are going to take care of, and those are the students of the Valdosta City School System. Every child deserves the opportunity to have a high-quality education. I believe in a concept that I call student success. Success means different things to different people. To me, it is achievement and performance. You can't separate the two. Our students will see success at unprecedented levels with the work that we do here as a team today. I am so excited to join your family. I cannot wait to get to know you, to get to meet you, and to partner with you arm in arm as we take the students of Valdosta City Schools to the next level. Thank you. Madam Chair, again, we'll be taking my leave. We have to try Austin. Take them and go, because they've been with me all day. They've been working really hard, so I have to reward them. If you don't mind, I would like to say one last thing, and that is thank you to Dr. Alvin Hudson for leading the district during this time. It is a hard job, and he's been here, and from my interaction with you, sir, so kind, so gracious. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service, and I thank you so much for being here with me as we get ready to go through this transition. You are appreciated. So if we could just give him a round of applause.
At this time. In your hands.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, at this time, I would like to present the May financial report to you all. So you should have a copy there on your device. And we will start with the expenditures for the cash flow for the month of May. Payroll for the month of May was a little bit more than 3.2 million. Operating for the month of May was a little bit more than 5.8 million. Total expenditures for the month of May was a little bit more than 9 million. Capital Projects, Guardian Bank expense account, well, account. On the expense side, we had expenses going out in the amount of $142,576.20, and those were expenses for the baseball softball complex that's being built there on the Valdosta High School campus. Revenue going in, we had $150,000 that we moved from SPOS 6 up to this account, and then we earned $11,357.18 in interest. So revenue going in, we had a total of $161,357.18. And so in this Guardian, in the Capital Projects Guardian Bank account, we have a little bit more than 8.7 million. Revenue, QBE, quality basic education, we received a little bit more than 4.5 million from the state. And then local taxes, we received 496,292.63. So revenue received for the month of May was a little bit more than 5 million dollars. Cash, GIP, Georgia Investment Pool, we have a little bit more than 29.8 billion there. And First State, we have 911,679.4 cents. So total cash between GIP and First State is a little bit more than 30.7 million. Debt service, no expenses for the month of May going out, but we did have revenue going in. We deposited 720,000 from SPOS 6 into that account, and we earned 28,467.90 in interest. So total revenue going in was 748,467.90. In that account, debt service, we have a little bit more than 7.4 million there. Keep in mind, with debt service, we have an interest payment that is coming up in August, August of 2023, and that interest payment will be a million, $1,825,000.
That's for the high school?
That's for Valdosta High School, yes. Okay. SPOS 5, we had an expenditure in the amount of $40,467, and that was for the door and lock key upgrade for Becca and HLC. So now, all of the doors and locks are on the same keying system for those two schools. So those administrators, maintenance people, are not having to carry multiple keys to get in different areas. Okay, that's been done. Revenue going into SPOS 5, interest, we earned 21,788.28. So we have a little bit more than 5.1 million there in SPOS 5. And in the SPOS 6 account, we received a little bit more than a million dollars for our revenue for SPOS 6 for the month of May. We had 870,000 going out, that's 150 going up to Capital Projects, and 120,000 going to, I'm sorry, 100, I'm sorry, 720,000 going to debt service, and 150,000 going up to Guardian Bank. So that leaves us with 1.6 million there in SPOS 6 account. Are there any questions about the cash flow report for the month of May? Next report, you should have a copy of the general fund budget status report for the month of May, and we'll start on the revenue side. Revenues are coming in as anticipated, so nothing's out of the ordinary here. Year-to-date revenues, we received thus far between local taxes and what we received from the state, we have received a little bit more than 67.3 million year-to-date in revenues. So we've collected about 88% of what we projected. So again, money is coming in as anticipated. On the expenditure side, nothing's out of the ordinary with expenditures. Year-to-date expenditures, a little bit more than 62.9 million. We estimated that our expenditures will be a little bit more than 76.4 million. So at this time in the school year, we spent about 82, about almost 82% of what we anticipated we would spend for expenditures for this fiscal year. So revenues coming in, 67.3 million. Expenditures going out, 62.9, so revenues exceed expenditures, and so we're about 4.3 million to the yield for now. Okay? On the grant budget status report, I just want to point out CARES, and we'll look at CARES grant expenditures, CARES 2. Remember, CARES 2 will come to an end June 30, but we have to close out the books by September 30, so we're planning on making sure that we've exhausted everything by this week. So with year-to-date expenditures, we, a little bit more than 1.75 million there. 1.7 million. With CARES 2, expenditures going out for the month of May. Expenditures for CARES 3 going out for the month of May was a little bit more than... Total, I'm sorry, year-to-date, I'm sorry, year-to-date expenditures going out for CARES 2 is a little bit more than 1.7, and then year-to-date expenditures going out for CARES 3 is a little bit more than 12.9. And then on the revenue side for those two, we received a little bit more than 1.5 in revenue for CARES 2, and then revenue for CARES 3 a little bit more than 11.9. So again, things are looking good with CARES 2, CARES 3, remember. CARES 3, a lot of that money has been earmarked for Capital Projects, and those Capital Projects are steadily moving. Okay? Any questions about the grant fund budget status reports?
Just, Doc, in regards to the CARES 3, in regards to the curriculum, and I'm sure you're familiar with that, in regards to the amount that we put in to assist our schools, do we have leadership still in place to be able to evaluate that?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully get it to the incoming superintendents, so that we, as a board, will know what we all know.
Right, yes, sir.
In regards to personnel?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we'll do that. Just remember with CARES 3, we received a little bit more than 37 million, and out of that 37 million, about 25% of that had to be spent towards academics, student achievement, student learning. And so that was a little bit more than about seven, almost eight, nine million. So, yes, sir, we have track of all that, and we will make sure that we pass that on to the new superintendent.
And also speaking in regards to progress or regress in regards to our students, in regards to the departments that was overseeing those funds.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What type of progress we made, making? Because that's going to determine, in my opinion, I believe, and hopefully for a board in regards to some personnel.
Personnel that we have onboard. Yes, sir. I'll make sure that we get it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Chair, next on the agenda, student support services. The FY24 Code of Student Conduct Action is required on this. I sent that out to you all ahead of time, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to review it. In my notes to you all about the code of conduct, there were no major changes, but I do want to point out a few changes that were made. And like Ms. Long said, it seems like the code of conduct is getting longer and longer each year, and it is long, because we did add a few more things to it. What we, we made a change to the promotion retention. Remember that the board approved the promotion, well, made some adjustments to the promotion retention. So we removed the mastery of minimum reading proficiency level term by the district, so that was changed to reflect, I'm sorry, that was changed to reflect the updated policy by the board. Also in there, cellphone and electronic devices, we changed that a little bit based on legal counsel from our attorney. We updated the second offense, and we removed, the school would keep the device for the remainder of the year. In the past, it's been a practice that the administrators, if the phone was confiscated for a second time, they would keep that phone for the remainder of the year. Based on legal advice, we were told we don't need to do that. So we simply changed it to read that the parent guardian must make an appointment if that phone is confiscated a second time to meet with an administrator to pick up the device. Okay, so the vice of legal counsel, we changed it. Okay? And that's because if the phone is in our possession and something happens to that phone, then we assume responsibility for paying for the device, et cetera, et cetera. So we advised to do that. Also in there, we added anonymous alerts, we had information about that newly implemented app. The clear bag policy, we put something in there about information about the clear bag policy. We also put information in there about the weapons detection system.
Now, I didn't get a chance to read it, so what do we have in regards to the clear bag policy?
Sporting events and the impact, finance, parts buildings.
That we had that in place, but just have it now in the policy.
If we have it in the code of conduct, so that way everyone has a copy of it. Okay? So, Madam Chair, those are some of the updates that were made to the student code of conduct, so at this time.
This is an item.
Madam Chair, while we're on this, before we fall on it, and I think I could speak for some of us on this board. Time passes so fast, and there are things that we need to actually review in this code of conduct policy. So if we can, somewhere around the neighborhood of March or April, let's see if we can establish maybe a standing committee to review and look at some things that needs to be looked at, especially the alternative school.
Okay?
Thank you.
This is an action item, and a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's still in your hands.
Okay, Madam Chair, under new business, the LCCY contract for fiscal agent services. The Lounges Valdosta Commission for Children and Youth Services. Our district has provided fiscal agent services for the Lounges Commission for Children and Youth for over a decade. This is no financial impact for the district to serve as the fiscal agent for LCCY. LCCY receives funds through the Georgia Department of Human Services. So again, LCCY's mission is to help families in need. They can provide families. Uh, they can provide families with different toiletries, soap, light, lights, deodorant, toothpaste, basically any type of toiletry that is used in cleaning or grooming oneself. Uh, they also have established a parent resource center to help families with these needs, so families can go there and get, you know, things that, that are needed. And they, they are also offering parenting classes, and they help support our homeless families as well. And so LCCY, they work closely with our school social workers to help families that may be in need. So again, Madam Chair, Board, I'm asking the Board, if we could continue to be the fiscal agent for LCCY, because they definitely make a good impact to help our families, uh, in our district.
So move. Second.
Um, all in favor? At this time, we'll hear from Mr. Lee regarding benefit committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the committee did it made on the fifteenth of June. Uh, we discussed the things that we had already informed the board on in regards to some type of benefits, uh, that will assist, uh, and encourage, uh, maybe members, uh, of our community, uh, to serve on, on the board. Uh, the committee discussed different benefits that could be given to those board ed- of education members, uh, that have served a certain length of time, and, uh, the length of time was discussed, uh, within the committee, and we decided that, uh, that length of time would be ten years. Uh, we know that twelve years, uh, two years would be twelve years, but, uh, kind of met between the two in regards to, uh, serving time, and that time was agreed to ten years. Uh, so board members of ten years or more service will be eligible for the following benefits. Uh, to reserve season football tickets annually, as long as they are living. These reserved tickets are not transferable even upon death. And one Vadoosa City School System Go Pass, this pass should be given free, uh, general admission to students' performances located in Vadoosa City Schools, but does not entail the barriers to reserve seating at the school, at, at the school performance since our admission to any postseason athletic event. So we're having, uh, we're having something at the, uh, performance arts center, uh, that, uh, would not take care of that, is that right?
It would take care of that.
It would take care of that.
The Go Pass would allow.
But extracurricular activities in regards to ba- baseball?
They can get into our regular season.
Okay, but not post?
But not postseason. They can use the card to get into regular season.
Not post.
But not postseason.
Okay. And, uh, finally, uh, for the future, uh, benefit, if and ever, whenever, a new stadium is, uh, built, each member on the Board of Education, set in members, and members that has accrued ten or more years of service will be, will receive a, uh, pocket permit, pocket place, uh, in close proximity to the set in board if possible. And Doc, that needs to be in there if, if possible. Uh, the reserved parking spaces, uh, again, uh, upon the death, we'll, we'll come back to the board. And the board is asking the central office to, uh, add this to, uh, policy and our benefits, uh, for the, the board members. And also once this is completed, to let the members that it would be affecting that's not on the board know that they have these, these benefits. Also, for ones that don't know, all set in board members are eligible for health insurance, and that would be, uh, one of the things also that will be alerted, uh, during open enrollment, and I'm sure it's not on here, but midterm enrollment as well, is that right, Doc?
Yes, sir, that, that's in the open, yes, sir.
Okay. Any committee member have any input in regards to what we discussed? I think this is a good gesture, uh, for all set in board members and members that have served so faithful on this file, our Board of Education. We're not allowed, uh, to receive pay with, without going through a legislative process of this one. Really won't cause the system anything.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
So if we can't have this together for our first meeting in July, and have it as, I'm sorry, if you can, have it ready by the work session. That way we have, uh, thirty days in place, I think, that we need, so. That way we will have everything in place, decent and annoying. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel, pending litigation, and real estate.
Madam Chair, I'm respectfully adjourned to the second session to discuss personnel pending litigation and real estate.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
I would like to call back to orders of the Vuelosta Board Education Work Session Call Meeting. At this time, I need a motion for the following personnel. Resignations: One math teacher at New Bern Middle School, one spent teacher at New Bern Middle School, one science teacher at Vuelosta Middle, one ESAL teacher at Vuelosta High, one PE teacher at Vuelosta High, one secretary at Vuelosta High, and one pair pro at SL Mason. New hires: Two spent teachers at Vuelosta High School, one ESAL teacher at Vuelosta High School, one pre-K teacher at SL Mason, one PE teacher at SL Mason, two fourth grade teachers at Pineville Elementary, one science teacher at New Bern Middle School, one math teacher at New Bern Middle School, one PE teacher at New Bern Middle School, one spent teacher at New Bern Middle, one behavior specialist at... One behavior specialist that... PEC, one assistant superintendent and teaching learning at Central Office, one federal program director at Central Office, one assistant superintendent of students support service at Central Office, two pair pro at WG-9, one general secretary at WG-9, one pair pro at Pineville Elementary, one school nutrition assistant at Solis Mahone, one tech specialist at Central Office. Rehires: One STEM teacher at VMS. Promotions: One pre-K teacher at JLO Maxx, one first grade teacher at JLO Maxx, one clerk registrar at Vuelosta High School. May I have a motion?
I do, Chair. I want to make a motion to accept the superintendent's personnel recommendations as presented.
Exactly.
All in favor? Are there any board member comments? Reminders for the board: The Vuelosta City School office will be closed on July the 3rd through 4th, 2023, and observance of Independence Day. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.